Just time I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the West Mifflin area school district on Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty. The West Mifflin area school district regular board meeting on Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty is held via Zoom, meeting to begin at seven oh eight. Opening exercises, roll call.
Ahern.
Here.
Alexandrov.
Here.
Bennett.
Sorry, here.
Angler.
Here.
Castellnic.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Mattis.
Here.
Blazevich.
Here.
And DeSenza.
Here.
There are no presentations this evening. I don't believe we have any addendum items.
We do not.
That takes us to the hearing of the citizens' public comment. In order to provide comment through the district's website, the following must be met. Must include your name and home address in the email. Must be a West Mifflin Whittaker or Duquesne resident. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels. Direct email comments to the board president and/or superintendent. Mr. Esper.
Hey, we only have two comments this evening. The first comment is from Diane Stenasek. She writes, do not paraphrase. Six A two, the audit report, let's do better and follow the recommendations this time. Purchasing C three. Where is the money coming from for this two contract costing eleven thousand three hundred? Geese, another special ed due process complaint in the amount of twenty thousand. What is going on here? During the work session, when the comment by Ms. Angler about missing PTO money, board member stated, Gary, can you contact Steve about and complaints? First, it is DA Zapala, by using his first name, he seems to be indicating a personal relationship. I questioned at the meeting about it, and we were told that there wasn't enough evidence. There should have been with the affidavits signed by parents that were part of the evidence, and there was actually several complaint brought to the investigator. Also, it is Mr. Mata as he is the solicitor and should be addressed properly. So if we are here for the students, let's prove it to the residents by signing a document that as a board member, you will not accept any gifts, golf outings paid by a vendor, trip to Deep Creek, game tickets, restaurant gift cards, and anything else that falls under to role of not accepting for contracts, gifts for contracts. Attached to this email is a sample form. Who is willing to do this and show the residents why you are there? And the form she attached, it says, I blank, board member's name, do pledge not to accept gifts from, not to accept and gifts from and vendor that is construed as a pay for play. This included game tickets of any king golf packages, trips to Deep Creek and others. And I did not, I did not.
If I can comment on a couple of those, one, we're not going to comment on a special ed that deals with a student and it deals with litigation. I will say that I know there were a lot of things that Sylvus had to go back through and deal with and clean up from a long time ago, and I think she's doing very well in creating a better lines of communications with the parents, and I think Mrs. Stenasek knows that. The other thing is, as far as the PTA thing, we've discussed this numerous times, we don't have control over that. We don't have control over the district attorney. It's my understanding that the complaint was made at the West Mifflin Police Department. They spoke with the district attorney. My understanding that that individual is clear, whether or not that means that they didn't do anything, or there wasn't enough evidence to go forward. I don't make that determination now that it is the board. I ask that we refrain from making any further comment on that because that individual happens to be an employee of the district. And the last thing with regard to the gifts, you're prohibited by law to do, to do not accept those types of gifts. You can accept a gift up to two hundred and fifty dollars from any individual, and it cannot be in an attempt to hire or purchase. So you're prohibited by law, that already exists, from doing that. The two hundred and fifty dollar limit is somebody that is already hired or already under contract here. If they offer you something minimalist, as the state puts it, is up to two hundred and fifty dollars, then if you, you would have to report it if you accept something over that. So there already is a law in place to handle that. You can do whatever you want with Mrs. Stenasek's comment, but I might remind you all that you are already under those obligations.
Okay, we'll move on. Next comment is from Mark Yuhaus. To whom it may concern, I've been getting texts from friends that the West Mifflin Booster Group is still being questioned on social media. I would like the facts stated, not rumors. Fact, I came to the school board over two years ago and did a PowerPoint presentation to the board with the idea of the West Mifflin All Sports Booster Group. At the time, the entire board liked the idea because it put a focus on every student athlete will benefit that the board. And I agreed that there was, that there were the haves and the have-nots within our athletic teams. The haves banned boys baseball, boys soccer, girls softball, girls basketball, have-nots, boys and girls track and field, boys and girls tennis, boys and girls golf, girls soccer, girls volleyball, swimming. The booster group was formed to help every program in, in West Mifflin High School. This was so every kid had a banquet, fall, winter, or spring, had money to buy every senior a gift for each athletic program, and to have game day programs and to help supply certain needed equipment for programs, to help take some of the burden off of the taxpayers and the school board. Fact, Mr. DeSenza never signed the five oh one C three application. Let's get that clear. As for Mr. Esper, as we were forming the booster organization, and we were, and we, Mr. Mata's office authored to help file the five oh one C three paperwork for us, we needed a person that was going to do the audit for the five oh one C three to complete the application, and Mr. Off, Mr. Esper offered temporarily to perform that role for the booster group until it got up and running, as we as an organization would then get our own accountant to handle that for us. As this was a nice gesture by Mr. Esper to help us as we got started, that's it. Fact, I requested, I made an appointment with, as requested, I made an appointment with Mr. Souls and Mr. Esper to bring up the financials, and for Mr. Souls and Mr. Esper to go through the financials with me, present, I gave access to the account, I left the canceled checks and deposits and receipts with the administration for two weeks, and then I made arrangements after two weeks to come, pick up the financials for Mr. Esper. All the deposits and withdrawals in the balance all worked out where it was supposed to be. Fact, I have said from day one, two years ago, all I was doing was getting this booster group up and running, and once it was up, I was stepping down as per the bylaws, no parent of any student athletes currently participating can hold the office, can hold the title of president, or any board director position. Parents could only participate in the committees within the booster group, i.e. banquet committee, fundraising committee, sponsorship committee, the game day program committee, a team moms committee. Fact, I met with Mr. Ray Ross last December two thousand nineteen and asked him if he would take over the booster group, and he said yes, that we would meet to handle the transition in the beginning of two thousand and twenty, but COVID came and everything just went dormant. And Mr. Ross and I started picking up the conversation this past fall, then Ray Ross and I met Friday, October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and started the transition. He recommended to me that he talked at a community board to also become the board of directors on the All Sports Booster Group. That's where all this is now stands. Fact, I came up to the administration building and met with Mr. Souls and Mr. Esper over the board's financials, and I met with Mr. Ross in the board, and the board for the community group. Will the board, will be the board for the All, West Mifflin All Sports Booster Group. So I did everything that was asked of me, so that's what needs to be reported on social media, not lies or false accusations. Let's all be transparent, everyone deserves that. If anyone needs anything else from me, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thanks, Mark Yuhaus.
I would like to address this because I was the one that brought up the booster group. In September and October meetings, I requested this information, and I still haven't been provided by it. The argument as to whether or not the district is involved is obvious to anybody, it's public information. You can go to the IRS website and see who the IN is under. Also, Mr. Squires has a YouTube channel which has all of our meetings on it. So if you go to the August eighth, twenty nineteen meeting, you will see Mr. Yuhaus speak to our board, prior to me being on it. You will also see our solicitor step and speak on his behalf for this group. So the question as to whether or not the district is involved is apparent. I don't need to prove that. Also, I questioned the fact that in that August eighth meeting, Mr. Yuhaus stated that thirty thousand dollars was acquired for advertisement on the Jumbotron on our scoreboard, and it was going to go to the booster group. I want to know, and I still want to ask the same questions, who's on the board, how much money was raised, and where did it go? If there was thirty thousand dollars that was in, in lined up for this advertisements on the Jumbotron, that money needs to go to the general fund, not to a sports group. I would also.
That would not be legal. We are not giving money from the Jumbotron to boosters organization, and that was never the case, and I believe Mr. Esper can tell you that that was never the case.
Well, hopefully, when I get the documentation, I can see that. My other concern is the fact that when I received our solicitor's bill for this month's meeting, there was almost seven hours spent working on this All-Star Booster Group that we're supposedly not involved with in the district. Research, reviewing findings, drafting memos, which I never got, I don't know who got them, so how is the district not involved but our solicitor spending time working on this? I'm the one that requested the information, so I'd like to know who the memos went to. Email articles of incorporation, tax.
I read the memo in executive session prior to our in-person meeting, if you remember, when we were sitting there.
I remember you mentioning it and saying you would send it to me.
I, I read it to everybody sitting there, but I can send you a hard copy, sure.
I would just like to know what it's about. So the facts are apparent, you can view all of this, thankfully, Mr. Squires puts all of this on YouTube, and it's all apparent. So it can be directed at me, if there's any questions or any controversy, it can be directed right back at me. I still would like these answers. If there's money that's being raised, and it's not accounted for, and our children are involved, I'm going to ask the questions, and you can take it up with me. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Sorry, I was on mute. Does that, does that conclude our public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have no information items. That takes us to Board Secretary Business Managers' report.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I would respectfully request a motion second approval on the following items. Under A, Board of Directors, we talked about approving Aiden Blazevich and Corey Sanchez as a student board representatives for the twenty twenty-one school year. They are on here. I did black them out until we pass this motion, so we'll bring them on as soon as we pass, pass these motions. Number two is new. This is just accepting the Pennsylvania Auditor's General Performance Audit for the year's ending fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And item number three, these policies were discussed during the work session last month. So this would be the first reading, and I'll go through them quickly. Number zero zero eight is updating the organizational chart. Numbers one oh three and one oh four are discrimination. Title nine, sexual harassment affecting students and staff respectively. Number one thirteen is special education, one thirteen point one, discipline of students with disabilities, one thirteen point two, behavior support, one thirteen point three, screening and evaluation of students, for students with disabilities, one thirteen point four, confidentiality of special education student information. Two oh three is immunizations and communicable diseases, two oh four is attendance, two forty-nine, bullying and cyberbullying, three twenty-three is tobacco and vaping products, eight ten point one, school bus drivers in school, commercial motor, motor vehicle drivers. Number nine oh four, public attendance at school events, and nine eighteen point one, Title One, parental family engagement policy.
Motion by Mr. Marshall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blazevich. Any questions or comments?
I have a quick comment. I just want to make sure, and number one, Aiden is my son, and I just want to make sure that that's on the record and clear, and he and Corey were selected, the way that selection process is to get to be school board representatives is, is the, I think, I believe it's senior class president, and it's the president of student council are automatically assigned this position. Aiden's, Aiden is the, he's the student council president. So I just want to make sure that there's no signs of nepotism or anything. I was surprised that he was going to be, I actually didn't know he was on the agenda until we saw it, and he was surprised as well as me, but I'm excited, so appreciate your support.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
I'm staying from one, yes, to two and three.
And DeSenza.
Yes.
Okay, so give me a second, and I'll. And there they are, congratulations, guys. Okay, moving along, B Finance, these are two new items. Item number one is recommending the board provide settlement authority to the solicitor, and this relates to Tech One Associates, associates, this is the, and five oh, five fifty-five Mountain View Drive, which is the Shopping Plaza, up off Lebanon Church Road, in the amount of twenty million for eighteen and nineteen, and sixteen million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand for twenty, in accordance with the memorandum that you guys received on November twelfth. And number two, it's authorized the board to dispose of all educational books that have a copyright date of two thousand and ten or prior, which is not being utilized at the high school, per board policy, seven oh one point one, per the request of Mr. Lick, the high school president, the high school principal.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. Any questions or comments?
Do we know how much that these two properties have gone down in value, or did they go up?
Actually, for us financially, this is a net wash, so we, we can, you know, we'll see what next year brings us.
Joe, do you know how much it costs to file an appeal?
For us?
Yes.
Well, we, we.
If we change our mind and want to seek a higher rate.
Well, I mean. Quick, Mrs. Angler, this is a settlement you're voting on tonight, so if you don't want to agree to it, you would go, no. The appeal was already filed to the Board of View. If we would go forward with a hearing in front of the Board of Viewers, they would make a determination. There's some costs with that associated, I think that was in the memo with regard to the appraiser testifying, and then if we wouldn't like the answer there, we would appeal that to the Court of Common Pleas. And there's normal cost of filings with that as, as an appeal, probably in the range of two to three hundred dollars to file that appeal, but then, of course, you have legal time, once it reaches the Court of Common Pleas that would occur. It's tax neutral on this settlement, and I think we're going to see a lot of these, we need to be cognizant of them next year, filing these appeals again on behalf of the district, because what's happening is a lot of these commercial properties are based on income, and they're giving tax abatements, or they have low, or they have low capacity right now because they're losing their store owners. But hopefully, if the economy bounces back and this thing's gone and they're back at full capacity, we would need to move forward and then filing appeals to get us back up to the numbers we were pre-COVID.
That's what I was wondering, how much is it going to cost down the road?
That is not going to cost us anything to file those appeals with the county at the B par level, and then they'll escalate again probably to this Board of View level. The good news is, we've already had an appraisal, it's just an update on the income approach, so it's not a significant value because we've already paid for the large portion of the appraisal.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall. Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
DeSenza.
Yes.
Six C, purchasing and contracting, the first two items were discussed last week, and there's one new additional item, and that is recommend that the board approve the contract for the professional services of the PASBA in their policy review and administrative regulation services at the cost of eleven thousand three hundred, which was actually discussed under the committee meetings last week.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis. Second by Mr. Alexandrov. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
DeSenza.
Yes.
D minutes on page two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Castellnic.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't pick who.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blazevich. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
DeSenza.
Yes.
Item six E, reports on pages two and three.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Dave.
Sorry, my mouse is dying, yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And DeSenza.
Yes.
Item six F, refund subtracted from expenditures on page three.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Castellnic.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And DeSenza.
Yes.
Item six G invoices on page, pages three and four, the only addition from last week, was the invoice from our solicitors, that's item one D, and this does include the B cards.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Marshall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes, to all but three A.
Yes, to all but three A.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. President, all items passed on the nine to zero vote, with the exception of three A, which passed on a seven to two vote.
Thank you.
Six H, requisitions, others, we did have two executive sessions, one on November twelfth, and one on November nineteenth, and they're properly noted.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Castellnic.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And DeSenza.
Yes.
That so concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. District operations. Mr. Souls.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank and welcome our two student representatives, so thank you for being with us. Under district operations, we have letter A and letter B, we would like the board to approve the curriculum cycle as presented from committee, and we would also ask the board to approve the GSA club at the middle school for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mattis, second by Mr., Mrs. Angler. Any questions or comments?
Yes, can you explain what a GSA club is?
That is the Gay Straight Alliance.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just, I didn't know the, what a letter is stored for, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there no payment to the sponsor?
Not in the first year of the club, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Not in the first year of the club.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yeah.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And DeSenza.
Yes.
Under superintendent's report, we have A through C. Under A, Student Services, we're actually asking the board to approve the settlement for a due process hearing in the amount of twenty thousand. Under Student Activities, the Veterans Day Ceremony, like to ratify that back to November eleventh, and again, the ROTC program did a very nice job, first-class operation, and the ceremony was definitely enjoyed by all. Number two, we have no clubs or sponsors, and then under C, we have buildings, grounds, the track, moon board approved, ratified a list of building permits, and that would be the boys' basketball conditioning, the baseball conditioning, the Veterans Day ceremony, and the West Mifflin Umpire School.
All right, do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Angler. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And DeSenza.
Yes.
Okay, under professional personnel, leave of absence, we have three. Um, the number one and number two are taking an FF CRA. And the third is requesting a sabbatical leave. Under B resignations, we have none, retirements, none, hiring and transfer, none. And finally, under E, we asked the board to approve the following club or activity for the twenty twenty-one school year. And that would be the girl, uh, gold club, the girls only leadership development club. And they will have two sponsors.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahearn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blazevich, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And D'Scenzo.
Yes.
All right, under non-certified personnel, under A, leave of absence, we have two, like to ask the board to ratify two leave of absence. Uh, unpaid leave of absence for two employees. Under B, we have one resignation, Amy Carroll, part-time parent educator at the middle school. One retirement, and that would be Mr. Sweeney, custodian from the seven to three, three o'clock shift at the high school. Under D. We have two, two hiring, it's recommended board approve and ratify the assignment of Robert Ho, class one custodian groundskeeper at the middle school slash field house. And also to approve Jacob Brown to the position of class one custodian groundskeeper on the twelve noon to eight PM shift at the middle school and field house.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, we have nothing under E.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kostelnik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Okay, under athletic personnel, uh, we have nothing under A, leave of absence. B, we have one resignation of a middle school assistant track coach. Under C, we have two hirings, uh, one for the head varsity track and field coach. And also the head high school varsity track and field coach, and I believe one's an indoor and one's one's the outdoor. And those are both from uh Mr. Mann. And under the other, we have nothing.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahearn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
And D'Scenzo.
Yes.
And Mr. President, under substitutes in in number twelve, substitute in number thirteen conference, we have nothing, so that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souls, um, takes us to board president's correspondence, there is none at this time. Executive session discussion, we discuss personnel litigation. Um, board reports we covered yesterday unless anybody wants to report on anything this evening. I'm sorry, we 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 covered that la- last week, I apologize.
Mr. President, uh, can I ask Mr. Solomon to talk about the uh article in the paper today, we'd like to congratulate a couple of our sponsors in in the gold club.
Absolutely.
Uh, thi- this week, uh, there was a uh newspaper article uh written by a Ms. Carpenter, who has uh written uh two very nice articles for our district previously. Um, it was in the Post Gazette and it was featured on Nikki Lowstetter and Jenihandra. And uh, you know, the number of students that have participated in the girls only leadership development. Um, I know that uh they're pretty wide open on any visitors, uh, females, of course. Um, so if any, any of the female board would like to uh have a visit if you haven't done so already. And I know that they're always looking for any sort of community uh involvement or assistance, so uh and that's uh Ms. Nikki Lowstetter and Ms. Jenihandra, so uh that's that's all, Mr. Souls.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon, very nice article, very nice.
All right, does anybody else have anything to report on uh concerning committees? All right, that takes us to the solicitor's report.
My report was given in the executive session, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Masiyo, now, uh, first, first time up, student board representative reports. Welcome, gentlemen.
Um, so, uh, as we're going into the school year, um, we're still planning events. Uh, student council is planning um a light up drive-through event. Uh, to, you know, spread holiday cheer, uh, possibly raise money for charity. Um, it's tentatively planned for December seventeenth and eighteenth. Um, we have our TLC, uh, is planning a powder puff game for the spring. Um, and our freshman in class representatives uh are looking into like a clip to Cleveland to see the Cavaliers play. Um, all of these events are uh obviously keeping in mind what's going on with COVID. Um, keeping in line with the instructions, uh, and everything is still uh entirely up to the future.
Yeah, on a high note, though, uh, National Honor Society, a couple of weeks ago, started to volunteer at the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. Uh, while continuously reserving dates to provide club members more opportunities to help out. On the date I attended, we packaged one thousand nine hundred boxes to give back to the community in a safe and contactless manner. And we are planning to volunteer again on the twenty-first, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth. We also have planned a senior dance to take place on February twelfth at the Gateway Clipper, but once again, we are still hesitant as we wait for more guidelines regarding the virus. Lastly, the ski club is looking into a seven-spring strip, but they are also still proceeding with caution as the virus continues to impact our area each day. The high school is hopeful that these events and activities will eventually take place, but clubs are erring on the side of caution for them to take place safely. And that about wraps up everything we have to report, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, very nice job, look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
Yeah, I want to ask Aiden this, how come he doesn't have a nice spot to sit like his father? That view your old man has behind him.
He has access to technology that I just will never.
All right, that takes us to old businesses, anybody have any old business they'd like to discuss?
I do. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I I just wanted to, um, and I probably should have done it after Mr. Uhas's, um, I read his email. I I just want to be clear, um, that when this started, I had agreed to be the registered agent. Every uh nonprofit must have a registered agent, that person is responsible for receiving all legal documentation. That is the only role of that person. Um, I think there was some confusion, um, I I never agreed to do an audit. Uh, I did agree to be on the board of directors temporarily until the organization got up. Uh, got up and running and um, you know, it asked that I'll do it, so this will get started, but you know, as soon as it get off, gets off the ground, you know, find business owners or or other people to be on the board. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Mrs. Angler.
Uh, Mr. Esper, I want to apologize because I feel like it put the gun on you and that was not not my intention. Um, I know you're just trying to help. Um, my concern is the fact that um, the solicitor had a lot of involvement in all of this. And they're not now helping any of the under groups or other um entities that we have in West Smithland. So that was my reasoning is to say.
That we were asked to do that by the board and by Mr. Uhas to donate our services. And uh, I believe that Mr. Matta agreed to donate our services, the district wasn't charged for it. We do that often, we are, we are requested by numerous sports, numerous clubs and organizations for donations. Uh, I just have to say that I think our, we're pretty responsive to that and we try to make sure that we help out in all organizations that request our help. They just requested it in the form of of some legal work, we're filing it online. Uh, I know that Sam Delfonso from my office did that. Um, and I think that was the extent of it. I think the people are trying to draw conclusions and we were involved in it after that, all we were involved in was filing that. As I explained to you before, and I read the memo, the only other thing was when they came for the games of chance, I sent an email to Denny and said they didn't qualify because they hadn't been in existence for one year. And advised him not to sign off on the document, then I believe Mr. D'Scenzo, Mr. Esper were accused of signing. Um, but my advice was not to sign it because they weren't in existence for one year. That is the only involvement that this, the solicitor's offices had until recently, when you've asked us to look into finding out what happened in that gap period. What of things we weren't involved in, and I think you've been speaking with Gary directly on that. Sam from our office went back for through, looked for any filings they had, anything on the computer. He went back through all of our notes to set out a timeline of what our involvement was. I went through my emails to find the emails that I sent to Danny telling him not to sign the small games of chance. And I believe most of the communication recently has been between you and Mr. Matta, it hasn't been with us and Mr. Uhas at all. I haven't spoken to Mr. Uhas, I don't believe Sam from my office spoke with Mr. Uhas at all about this. And we were attempting to try to get the financial records that you requested to be brought up to the district. I believe that Mr. Matta has reached out to Mr. Uhas, I believe that the administration has requesting those records. My understanding was they were brought up there and the day that you and I were up there and you wanted to go look at them, we were told they were gone. So I want to be clear that we were not involved in anything after, all we did was take a action of filing the documents for them and making sure they were in proper order, which we were asked to donate our services, the district was not charged to do that. The only other time we had involvement was when they came for the small games of chance. And you can watch that meeting as well, I'm sure, on Mr. Squire, so you will hear me tell Mr. Uhas that we couldn't pass that resolution because they weren't in existence for a year. The only involvement we've had until recently, when you asked us to attempt to get those financial records. And I've told you, Miss, to put it on the record, that you wanted to see those financial documents and you have, because I think that you have a right to see them.
Thank you, Krisha, and and thank you for your help, um, and I again am still waiting to see them, so hopefully I will see them at some point.
If I, Ms. Angler, this is Gary and I apologize, I got on here late, I was involved in another meeting. But um, I had contacted you earlier this week and informed you exactly what the process, what happened. I did not receive those documents, they were sent to the to the administrative office. My understanding is they gave the whole board notice that uh to come and see them, no one reviewed those documents. And um, I thought that a copy was going to be made for my office and unfortunately that did not happen. And those documents were sent back and were the, in the process of getting them back again. I didn't have anything to do with that and you were well aware of what occurred. Um, as far as our office's involvement previously. At a meeting, the the that that group came up and was trying to do a five oh one C three. I thought, as I have done in numerous school districts, not just the West Smithland School District, starting years ago. Uh, my office did the one in Clerton, my office did the one in uh McKeesport, I believe, number of districts that we did that. And we volunteered our services to assist them to establish the five oh one C three for no charge. We didn't charge the district for that, nor did we charge the group for that. We thought it was something to do for the community and help the kids of the West Smithland School District. At no time did we have any involvement except helping them process the paperwork. And that's all that we've ever done, after we helped them process the paperwork, I have no other knowledge what they did, what fundraising activities took place, or how those funds were spent. Our office didn't do anything except assist an organization to get a five oh one C three for they didn't have to go through the cost of getting a law firm to do that for them. That it, I mean, I agree that I don't think it's just this organization. I think our policy is pretty clear, even though I think it's a little um extreme to have a CPA audited uh statement. But I think that each one of the groups that raises money on behalf of uh the students, activity groups, sports teams, the band, PTAs, whatever it is, should have to provide documentation to the district because they're putting on their the fundraising, the West Smithland School District, and that's why people donate to them. And I think that the board should be able to see those documents to make sure those funds are being good um spent correctly. Um, I wish those, that that the administration would have spoken to me before they sent those documents back because I would have asked to keep a copy, hopefully in the future we keep copies of every document that we receive in that manner.
Thank you, I actually wasn't going to speak on that manner of that matter again, I was actually going to discuss another um thing that I brought up at our past meeting, which is I had requested the gate receipts um from our games that we had this year from Mr. Esper, and I was able to view them up in the office this week. Um, and I can say honestly that I have more of a paper trail at a school dance than what we have at our gate right now. And so I'm bringing it back to the board because it needs addressed. Um, there's no kind of paper trail, we're just stating I sold X amount of tickets and I comped X amount of tickets. And a larger matter is the fact that of the sixteen deposits, only five of them have been made. So eleven hundred some dollars was deposited and over seven thousand has not been. So on top of that, we've comped out over twelve hundred dollars worth of tickets. So this was a a COVID year where we played very few games and I'm feeling that this numbers, I don't feel these represent what's actually going on because we have no adequate paper trail, one. And two, the fact that we're comping so many tickets is is dire to what we have right now with our budget and the fact that we're looking at cutting costs everywhere and we've raised taxes and, you know, we're looking at furloughing whatever to try to make ends meet, this is unacceptable. So I'm bringing it back to the board, the fact that there's seven thousand dollars that has not been deposited, where is it? Why is this okay? And is there a board member here that feels it's okay that it hasn't been deposited yet?
Uh, Gina, um, with all due respect, I think you have those numbers backwards.
Okay.
There's a thousand that that is actually being deposited either today or tomorrow. Um, Mr. Stevenson did uh let Mag know, um, that and he has to bring those deposits up, so there were five missing deposits.
Well, this is from two months ago. Still.
Well, I can't, yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
Regardless, regardless, this, our teachers are jumping through hoops because there's no P cards now. So if I teach home ec and I'm trying to do a cooking class, I don't know if we're gonna have class tomorrow and I don't know how many kids I'm gonna have, but I'm jumping through hoops because I don't have a P card to buy the things that I need. Um, but I'm gonna make it work because that's what we need to do to show accountability in our district. Yet we have a department that has thousands of dollars that isn't being deposited for months on end. It's unexcusable. I think we need to look at doing um maybe online tickets or something, but it needs addressed by this board.
Is there any way you can share that information, like, like you've seen it, I haven't seen it, I think if it's it's something
It's available.
Bring to us, I think we should all see it.
Yeah, well, this is the first year it seems like it was even asked for and Joe's trying, Joe is in charge of checks and balances, this was not, you know, this was not his doing, and Mr. Souls unfortunately is just roped into this, um, so I apologize to you gentlemen. Um, but this has been something that's been questioned for a long time and this is my first year on the board and you know, people want accountability and we want transparency, we want to know what's going on and.
I believe, uh, Ms. Angler, that Mr. Esper did um come to me and Mr. Matta about putting a policy or some procedures in place about this when he first took over, and I think he's been working on that, I know you're on the policy committee. Perhaps it's something Mr. Mattis would entertain us looking at a policy on this issue.
Sure.
And Matt, if uh I I can share those reconciliation statements that were completed with the board. That's not an issue.
Yeah, I just, I just, I, I, I'm not not believing Gina, I believe her, I just, if if you're Gina asking us what our opinions are, I think it's up to us to make that determination by looking at the same information and not not believing you, right, like, but I'd like to see how how little record there is or isn't and kind of make my own dis- determination at that point, but I agree, like, if this is a problem, if this is something that is is needing, you know, looked at, then we should look into it, I just need to look at it for myself is like all I'm saying.
Well, Matt, before um you guys and Mr. Souls got on the board, when a board member requested information, every board member got it.
I was just about to ask that, can we make that a practice, or like Matt said, I, this is the first time I've heard of anything like that.
Well.
Not on any times.
Well, actually, we we still do practice that, but if a board member comes to the office and wants to look at some documentation and and Miss, Miss Angler did not take anything with her, um, so that would be no different, Debbie, than you coming up and taking a peek at the P cards.
Correct, I was just making a general statement, Joe.
Yeah, that's.
In person, I, yeah, I agree, but anything that would be.
We have always, if if one requests it, all get it, that's been our policy and I think I've I've followed that all year.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, Joe, you have. Absolutely, Joe, you have followed that, I was just making a general statement, that's all.
Does anybody else have any other old business? New business?
Mr. President, I have something under new business, forgive me if I go about this the wrong way, but I'm still learning how to, the process works here, but. My, my question is, when they cut down the school on Pennsylvania Avenue, there is a, two crosswalk lights that are not being utilized right now. On Commonwealth Avenue coming from Duquesne, we do not have a cross or a slow light. We also do not have one on Homeville Road coming from the bridge area towards the high school. I guess I'm asking, can I make a motion that we look into or have those two signs moved? So they can be utilized for safety and not just wasted on Pennsylvania Avenue.
I believe, Mr. Bennett, that those are put up by the boroughs, and so we could get that request over to talk to them, maybe, Mr.
Well, well, I believe that this came up in, in the past, and Mr. Hess and I, the Public Works Director, discussed it, and we looked into it, I have to look through my old emails, and. The explanation that we got was that you cannot move those, I, I don't know who is the authority in charge of it, if it's the state or the county or who it is, but I, like I said, I don't want to give any misinformation now, but I definitely. Mr. Hess and I looked into those a year, when Emerson originally closed, and we were given an explanation, for some reason, you cannot move those. So that's why nothing was done with that, and the cost of those, maybe I talked to the police chief as well, maybe he was involved. Those were pretty expensive, I, I think they're, they, they, they come in around about a hundred thousand dollars.
And that's why I, I can't see purchasing two new ones, I definitely think we need them in the two areas that I was picking up, but we, we have two that are being unutilized.
There's also two at the old middle school, too, that aren't being used.
Yeah, and, and, and like I mentioned, I apologize, I don't have the information in front of me, maybe I, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with the police chief tomorrow, and Mr. Hess again, and. I'm almost positive, the explanation they gave me was that they cannot be transported from one location to the, to the other, but I'll definitely get the answer for you guys, and I'll, I'll let you know.
Thank you, Mr. DeSenzo.
Is his request something we bring up to the Safety Committee, or, like, is it, that's something that committee would look into?
I believe from what we went through before, that it's with the state, that it's a combination of school district and borough puts them in, but it's up to the state or higher authorities to remove them. Or to do things with them that we just can't arbitrarily pick them up ourselves and move them over. I think Tony's right, we had this question before about eight or ten years ago, it's something with the state or higher authorities.
Yeah, well, Mr. DeSenzo, if you want to report back to me on, on what you find out, and I could share it with the board, and, or you could share it with the board.
Will do. Does anybody else have any other new business? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mo- motion to adjourn, meeting adjourned, thank you.